I'll make a motion to approve payroll in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars in portion.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You have some sign here?
Yes. I think I've got that backwards. The two hundred and seventy-four thousand, I think, was claims.
That's what this says here, is two seventy-four?
Yeah, it was that two hundred and seventy-four thousand is for claim, is the payroll acknowledged of claims.
I've got two sets of claims, one's one seventy-nine and one's one seventy-seven.
And that's the pay, the two payrolls.
Okay, so you get that back.
I got it reversed.
I got it backwards.
I got you.
Okay, I see.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Jason, I'll make a motion to approve payroll, two different amounts. The first one is for one seventy-seven, two twenty-seven, eighty-five. The other, one seventy-nine, six sixty-six, ninety-seven.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we need to acknowledge we receive the payroll claims accounts, and that's two seventy-four, three ninety-one.
Yep. Yes.
So you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to acknowledge we receive payroll claims accounts, payroll report, two seventy-four, three ninety-one, eight-four.
There you go. I'll second that.
All right, then we have claims, it's a big one this time. One million, six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents. Large part, big part is the buy-in, buy two minutes material for the highway.
Yes.
And then I also included the loans that we had for, O National Bank or First Financial Bank were included.
Yep.
The two that I paid.
And the septic at Rockville Lake was right at a hundred thousand, ninety-five thousand dollars.
I make a motion to approve claims in the amount of one million, six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Getting ready, getting ready.
Fill the water.
All right, we have a hand type check. We had, it was a check up time for Clock Tower, so the clock, so they came in. We had the town all set for a while because it was going off at three-thirty, I think, when it was six o'clock or whatever, and they weren't sure what was going on, but it's, but it's, they were just running tests on it.
So I just got this in, just in today's mail.
Okay. So we just need a motion for a hand type check, or?
Is that the only one?
Yes, that's the only thing for today's mail.
Motion to approve a hand type check for six hundred dollars to Tower Clock Company.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, anything else? No more hand type string there, is it?
No, that's the only one.
Sandy Wallace, you're up. How are you?
All right, how are you folks?
I'm good.
I, um, can I bring these around too?
Sure.
Don't want to get too close to them. I wanted to ask if you could lower the speed limit on Cox Ford Road without having to do the big prolonged process that takes a long time, several months, because we have a problem now, it's been one or a couple of months now with the canoe rental buses flying by. Some of them have slowed down now with Colton's involvement. I wonder if we can do it now without the big problems?
No, we'd have to have an ordinance, has to be advertised and...
Well, you're saying in the bad order anyway. I asked back fifteen years ago when it was the go-kart track in here, and so I'm not rushing anything, but they've been there, I think, two months, driving buses quite a bit every day.
What's the current speed limit, forty-five?
No speed limit posted.
I can't imagine that we were ever requested to change that speed limit, and that didn't happen. I was thinking it was thirty now, but I don't know that for sure.
Randy said he would go thirty and no more. I asked for twenty-five, and he said thirty in the bus, and he said the claim Vermont agreed, which he did before he opened. I talked with him. And, um, they've been there about two months, and Jamie said Randy's doing a little business, so I thought I'd come ask you, so...
Well, that's typically where that ordinance has to originate, and they bring it to us, and we approve it and go on, so we'll, Randy will be here after a while, so we'll check with him, see where we are with that. And let's see what the speed limit on there is now.
Yeah, and I just kind of wrote that up so you see who does use that road, and mostly it's not.
Sure.
Buses, except the canoe buses, walkers, hikers, bicycles, lots of kids.
Yep.
Um, it's kind of dangerous in those types of places. I've been at a couple nearnesses already, so...
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks. Kami?
Okay, I'm here primarily for the same reasons Sandy is, I'm Carrie Carbayly.
Just need to come up your timer so we can hear you, get you recorded.
I live on one thousand north.
I was on that today.
Which is on the east side of forty-one, if you're headed to Tangier. As you all know, they are repairing the bridge on the highway, so that has created an enormous amount of traffic that we don't normally have on our road. Our road, the speed limit needs lowered on it on a normal day, so I too, like Sandy, would like it to be done in an emergency nature. The speed limit is, is the county road speed limit, which I understand is fifty-five, and that's just way too high for that road. And if you guys don't think it is, I challenge you to drive down it.
I drove it today.
At fifty-five.
I drove it today.
At fifty-five.
Fifty-five is, five is the maximum, you can drive it.
Right, so that's what most people drive it.
Yeah.
Because most people are in hurry.
Don't know how they would, but they, they can, it's pretty, it's pretty washboardy.
Pretty reckless, pretty reckless.
I agree.
And I would agree, it's pretty washed out. The roadsides aren't cut. It's a danger, somebody's going to end up killed, as Linda Snodgrass was already killed on that road. And I feel sorry for the people that are having to use that road because of the runaround, and I wish we could be more proactive in this county in that when we know there's going to be a road job that you guys negotiate with the state to work around the clock or do things to prevent our only highway from being shut down.
They have to put a pipe in, Tammy, you have to cut the whole road and put a pipe in. You can't do half, half and half, so it's got to be, got to be the whole way.
Maybe you should have, um...
That's all state stuff.
...a better job of advertising.
That's all state, we have no say over anything, the state does have...
But you, you have say over what happens in the county?
They, no, not in the state, obviously.
Things could have been advertised better.
That's up to the state.
Maybe should have been a better workaround. I mean, I'm reading the paper every week, Jackson Bridge Men Destroyed Again.
No, that's not true, it's happened once. We had it taken out at one time, four times all year.
I argue with you, Jim.
I'm not arguing, I'm just telling you, there is, there is an official detour already, and there's an unofficial detour, which is Jackson Bridge.
I would like our speed limit, and I speak for our community, the people that live on the road, me, my brother, my sister, my neighbor Glenn Summers, to be reduced on that.
Yep, we can sure take care of that.
That the police start patrolling that road, and I know that calls have been made to the Sheriff's Department asking for patrols, and I understand the response was that the patrols are being done on Carpenter Road, so I don't want to blindside you, Jason, but that was the response we got, so, and we...
I'm talking to your sister, I didn't tell her that.
Okay, well, I'm not saying you did, but that's, so, um, so are you saying I should have approached Randy for an ordinance?
No, we can talk to him today, we can talk to him today.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Jeff Norman? Jeff back there?
I'm saying.
Okay. All right, we have a court motion to invalidate the tax sale.
That was just up that you, previously, property had been sold at tax sale. They had gone through the whole process, then didn't like the property at the back end, I guess, and so they had filed a motion to invalidate a tax sale. I filed a response to that, they filed a response to my response, I filed a response to their response, it got set for court. Subsequently, the property's now been redeemed by whoever did it, that hadn't paid your taxes, so the court case is now dismissed.
Right.
So we don't have to litigate it.
Okay, good.
So that, that was a good result, county got, the taxes got paid, and that's generally the goal, is for everybody to pay their property taxes, so they did, so that's gone now.
This one where you went and looked at a piece of property, and that wasn't one in law.
Right, they, they looked at the wrong property.
Yeah.
That's funny.
Purchased, expecting it to be one property, and it ended up being a different property, and so therefore they didn't like the purchase.
Yeah, that's funny. Okay, that was an easy one then. All right, we have, time to renew the maintenance for the elevator. The annual amount of thirty-five hundred and twenty-two dollars will result in a, how do we pay now, do you know?
Um, no, I'm not sure how we do pay now.
We can save one hundred and eighty-five bucks if we pay it all at one time, thirty-five hundred bucks, or we can go ahead and do quarterly, nine hundred bucks, so whatever you're... If you have a pleasure there. We're going to pay it all, I guess it makes sense to save one hundred and eighty-five bucks if we can. So any questions or concerns?
No, is it, has there been a, is there any changes to it, or is it the same as it's been?
It's about the same, and I think last year we did pay it annually.
Okay, if that's the case, and we can do it again, we might as well. I make a motion, we enter into the contract, elevator maintenance agreement with Mid-Americk Elevator Company, second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, this is a request for a copier to go to the Plaid Office. We were unaware, they did not have one there, had a need for one, otherwise we would have included them under the contract originally.
This is our update for our, because the contract for the copier is going to be with Rico.
Right. So what, so what is, so what is this one?
This is the contract for the maintenance, a contract that we've already got for that large machine that we purchased about a year ago when Pam was in office. And that's in, in the Plaid Office.
The big, the big copier?
Yeah, the big copier.
Okay, yeah, that doesn't fall in Rico. Yeah.
We do all the, um, Plaid maps with that.
Okay, so...
This is a regular contract that we...
Service contract, fifty-five dollars? And then use it at, at that rate of seven three-quarters cent per square foot?
We use it a lot when we had to print out all those maps for the town of Rockville, so they could, for their pipe, pipes and stuff like that that we did.
Okay.
Make a motion, we enter into the contract with Rapid Reproductions on the maintenance contract on the...
Nice second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Contract to print out.
Today is sixth.
Correct.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, Brownfield Site Low Die. And it was approved, so that's good.
They're just asking you to acknowledge that you're receiving funding from the state.
Okay.
To, to site evaluation and other things.
Let's see.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the, the fact that the state has approved this cleanup and that we're okay with moving forward with the cleanup of that location.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Can we add that at no cost to the county, make sure we put that in the minutes due, that we understand no cost to the county?
Yeah, that program's really good as far as...
They are, yeah, they've done good stuff.
And the doctor to sign?
Was there a second to that?
I second that, yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go. All right, then the Rico thing here is for the copier in the, in the Plaid Office.
So when I talked to the Rico guy today, if we do the hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents a month, that would bring us up to date with all the rest of the copiers, so this'd be like a lease to own. So at the end of the lease that we have with all the other copiers in the county, then at the end, it would be ours for a dollar buyout, or we could upgrade it and do another lease again.
Better be on the same status as all the other copiers.
With all the rest of them, that's why, that's why for those forty-two months, because in forty-two months from now, all of our other copiers will be running out.
Any questions?
And he also mentioned that this does save us more in entrance by going this way too.
Okay. There a motion to approve?
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve the contract with Rico. And I'll second that here.
Move a second to approve the contract with Rico for the additional copy for the Plaid Office. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Where's the actual signature?
He's going to be sending that later.
This is just from West Central, it's our, it's our annual, um, fee to West Central to be a participant of the six counties. It's a big changes down there, since we've changed the executive directors, the other one retired, and this new guy, you've met him, Ryan Keller's doing a, doing a good job. So we have, I don't remember what we paid in the past, remember what it was last year we paid for West Central?
I was thinking it was around ten thousand.
Okay, so this is broken down into the Economic Development side of it, fifty-two hundred dollars, then the Aging and Disabled Area Seven stuff, two thousand dollars, and then the Transportation Program, twenty-seven, for a total of ninety-nine, forty-six, seventy-five. There was a time when, and we, we have always got more by far out of West Central than we paid into it. They are responsible for feeding the aging, offering transportation. Park County was never very good about taking advantage of the transportation part, but they have made changes, and we are getting more benefit out of that as well. So it's much money well spent. There was a time when Ron Hensikamp was about to retire that I wasn't sure, because it's all grant based, it's all, all survives on grants and then payments by the counties. But I think we're pretty, pretty strong position now. So thoughts, questions? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to re-approve the twenty-twenty-one budget request of the West Central Economic Development District of ninety-nine, forty-six, seventy-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And a Cars budget request. This five thousand dollar request is the same as it's been for the past twenty years.
Yep.
And it provides services to those folks that need those special services. Basil Lehman is still there.
Make a motion, we approve the twenty-twenty-one budget request for Cars for five thousand dollars. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And WTH proposal.
And again, this one is with the Plaid Office, this is to do the splits. So we have a lot of splits that come in when deeds are transferred, and this is requesting them to, to take care of our splits on all those acreages that comes in on transfers.
Some of these requests, we were heading meeting, as you know, with the Plaid Office, it just couldn't be done without this service, now it's all computerized, it's got the, got the layers.
So this is just a monthly, just make sure I click. It's not based on what splits they do, it's just, so if they do no split for the month of May, we still pay them five hundred dollars.
Correct.
If they do splits in June, so it's just a flat rate, five hundred dollars a month.
Way it was explained before, you could do it by parcels, but you're better off, and they ran the numbers, better off to do it on the monthly basis rather than the parcel. I don't remember unless it was a parcel though to do it, I don't remember that.
But I just want to make sure that's what we were approving, is monthly.
Yes.
No matter how many we do, it's five hundred dollars.
Splits you have, or if you don't have any at all.
And a really extra thing on this that we're getting is that Trevor Bergemeyer, works for them, has been a saver desk for a lot of issues that came out that we couldn't do, just didn't have the expertise, because you know Karen's going to be leaving, or Karen is gone.
She's going to be leaving at the end of December.
End of December, okay.
She's still there.
So what a, what a void that's going to be when Karen's gone. So is that your motion, Bruce, to approve it?
Yeah, I was just looking for...
Have you seen it before, Nick?
No.
You want to see it first?
Period, I was just looking for, I don't see, here it is, July through June, okay, so July, one through June.
So it has an automatic renewal clause in it for one-year terms, unless we give a notice of intent not to renew, at least sixty days prior. So they're not going to come back to you and have you send another one. You have a notice, you give them notice if you don't want to renew.
Okay.
So if, like, at the end of next year, and we decide that we want to go by parcels instead of that, would we be able to still do that?
We'd have to decide that sixty days in advance and give them written notice.
Okay.
So you're going to need to mark your calendar if you're going to...
Sixty days of the anniversary, so it'd be sixty days before July.
Right, yeah.
So we can...
Otherwise it's kind of automatic.
So we can track how many parcels actually were done and what the cost was about.
I think right now, I think Lisa said like a hundred and fifty parcels is what they've got that she had had help with, and the other ones that she could do. She had an average of a hundred and fifty that she couldn't do.
Right, so this is one of those things that's a growing trend that people are putting in contracts, is automatic renewal, which, and so if you're not careful, you get a renewal if you're not happy. I mean, if you're happy, then it's not a good deal, but I guess what I'd say is either have them take that out or mark your calendar sixty days in advance of the renewal date to make sure you're happy.
Yeah.
Ends in June, so that means April, you got to make your decision, do either go or no go.
So can you take note, take note of that, now you have to decide by April if you want to renew or not?
Yeah.
If you say you don't want it for the next year, you only, you got to notify them in April.
Right.
So just put that on your calendar, that you got to make a call on that in April, or if not, if you wait till May, too late, you're going to...
Be stuck with it.
Good dragon, sixty day notice.
Probably has to be in writing too, or an email will suffice that account's attorney.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve?
Oh, I'm sorry, we got carried away, Nick, I make a motion, we approve the contract with WTH for the splits that they do for files and parcels.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you need the contract signed?
Yep. Stack's getting out of hand here. Okay, then we have two tour claims, they're concerned with the same thing. We had a snowplow driver back into a, to a person's, a car, so it's suit goes, and one suit was from the people who sustained the damage, and the other, they claim by the insurance company who paid them, apparently, and then, then went to the back. So if, if they were paid by the insurance company, why do we have the first one?
There's a law in Indiana as far as offset of insurance costs or whatever, so the insurance company can seek to recoup up to...
I understand that one, but why the other one, though? If they, they were paid by the insurance company, why are, why are they...
I think they were asking for their...
Deductible back, okay, okay, that makes sense, okay.
If I read the question.
Okay. Okay.
There's also a new one, I don't know if they have that for you guys yet, that I received notice on, but...
Yeah, those are both the same, that's one from the insurance company, the other one's a...
You'll probably have it at your next meeting or soon. I received the notice today on it.
Yeah, I've got it in the folder for next meeting.
Okay, all right. So I'm interested in that.
Okay. Next up, it's just a notice that 59 will be closed. It's getting tough to get out of Park County, 59 is closed, 47 is going to be closed, 234 is going to be closed.
Well, just to back up to what you were saying earlier, you know, if the state closes something, they're the ones who give the public...
Sure they are, it's fine.
Like, if we close a county road, we have notices in the paper, and so this is their notice that they're doing. I assume they've probably given it to the paper or somebody else locally, but...
I didn't think I was being argumentative, but it's not our responsibility to advertise a state highway closure, so...
I mean, we received notice of it, but they're required under state law to...
And a lot of people want, were upset because they closed the highway, they wanted half and half, but you can't do half if you're putting a pipe in across it, so you have to close it.
Well, they didn't ask us, I mean, they just...
This is what we're going to do, that's what we're going to do, yeah.
It's their highway.
Yeah. Oh, well, I've been a bad guy before, I can...
Same thing the federal government does when they come in and do things without asking you if they're...
Sure. And the IDM permit for Panhandle Eastern. Just the agenda meeting, meeting for Wild West River Heritage Commission. Then from structure point here, just notice about the South Market Street project. Reports on the meeting. Letter attached to the end there, as well as some people that think we shouldn't be allowing people with Confederate flags, and we have a tent for the Republicans and a place for the Democrats, but no other, no other ones, not because they couldn't, if they wanted to, but they're, they're not there.
Well, besides the courthouse lawn, the rest of it's private property.
All private property, yes.
So you can't regulate private property.
That's, that's a, while we have that, let's bring that up real quick. No, no, we'll do, I should make a note here, we're still talking about the, about the Bridge Festival questions, and we need to talk about when we're going to pull the trigger on that decision, so I'll make a note of that before I forget. I'm going to do them, get to old business, okay. So that letter is regards to vendors. And then we have a letter from Rocky, Rocky Fork about the road. Randy's already seen that, that as well. And... I don't see an ordinance for fair housing.
As to what?
For fair housing.
So I have a template of one, I don't have one necessarily for you to sign today, but it's just the Standard Fair Housing Act from the, it was adopted Federal Civil Rights Act in 1968, amended by Federal Housing Committee Development Act in 1974. What I wanted was permission to draft according to that act.
Sure.
For Jim's signature.
We just need to have one in place saying that we're going by the...
We can't receive funding on certain projects if we don't have that adopted. So it's not really a discretionary thing, I mean, if we want federal funding or state funding, we have to adopt it.
Okay.
So what I was seeking is just permission for you to sign once I have it drafted.
Okay, is there a motion of that effect?
Yeah, I make a motion, we can give, once Nick has a ordinance drafted, that we give Jim permission to sign it for the Fair Housing Act. I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I just, they need to be identical to what those acts indicate, so I'm just adopting that on which...
Okay, then we have the treasures, monthly report. Planning and zoning monthly report, oh clerk, the clerk is next, clerk's report, and then planning and zoning. Anything going on in planning and zoning of a particular notice, Daniel?
I missed the last meeting that was federal, Stroh, you might ask, I don't think, think they had a...
Didn't, didn't, we...
They had, they had not meet.
We, we just, as far as I'm concerned, just, they have two ordinance violations, yes, suspended.
Okay.
That are in the map.
And they're working on those, yeah, okay.
Those are something that take a little work on usually.
Okay. And then the EMS reports, Julie's not here tonight, but she has a report there of what the, what the numbers for the runs have been. Okay. All right, old business, county hiring outside counsel for judgment.
So what we received was a bankruptcy filing from a business over in Mozzuma. I don't handle bankruptcy cases, but what they were seeking is to discharge a judgment against their property in favor of him. A judge had entered an order on that, what I wanted was the authorization to have the bankruptcy attorney at my office look over the pleadings and make a recommendation on it. It's not area law, I'm very versed in.
Sure.
So mainly I just want, you know, release to be able to allow him to look at the full case and tell us what we need to do.
Okay. Is there a motion of that effect?
Yeah, I make a motion that we allow Nick to consult with his expert in his office regarding judgments and let him look over the file on what we need to do for that.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay.
Just so you understand, that file was filed in Mississippi, it's a big corporation.
Okay.
Order in the past was of the corporation, so...
Okay. Do you have any other old business?
I had a couple things. We had talked a little bit about access to the jail for defense counsel at their last meeting, I think. I talked with Randy Cleaver as far as cost. He indicated that it wouldn't be appropriate to have the internet access through the server the jail uses for confidentiality and safety reasons. So what he proposed is that we use a cloud-based system that we'd have to install as a server, which would cost about $800 to install, and it costs about $600 a month to maintain, and then you'd have setup fees, plus you'd also have to buy devices to be able to access the system. Right now, the access to the jail that we have is that defense counsel would come in, but they're talking across telephones in the jail, and that's really not an ideal situation for a number of reasons. In the past, we've talked in person at the jail.
Yeah, those calls are monitored, right?
Right, is why I, that's why I bring the subject up. And I talked with the judge, judge agreed, I talked with Justin about the issue, he was in agreement. Basically, he indicated that technology wasn't strong suit for him, and it, he deferred whatever Randy had to say, basically. So what we propose is that server be set up that would allow defense counsel to talk with their clients confidentially, without being recorded.
Okay. And then the 600, so it's 800 bucks and 600 a month?
It's going to be 600 a month ongoing, about 800 to 1,000 to set up the server.
Plus other equipment.
Plus you're going to have other equipment, plus whatever Randy charges us to do it to.
Where should that funding come from?
We have access to funding through the federal government due to the COVID situation, which this is really a COVID-caused issue, it's not an issue we had at the jail previously. But with the COVID situation, it makes it so, rightfully so, that jail does not want defense counsel coming in face to face, because we can be bringing outside germs, things like that in.
Right.
And then if we get somebody sick in the jail, it could spread like wildfire.
So where would that funding come from then?
It'd be from that nine, the PPP, or was it PPE, the grant through the...
Chris's guy.
With Chris, I talked with Chris, Chris...
Okay, so I was asking, you're coming through the five?
Right, I couldn't remember the name of the grant.
Five or four, it's CARES.
Yeah, it's, it's the grant Chris has been working with, and I had talked with Chris, and he felt confident we could qualify for the grant.
Okay.
The only concern I had is the recurring monthly fees going forward, and how do we offset that on a yearly basis?
Yeah, Chris is concerned about it, we get locked in, do things that, once the money dries up from this, where does it come from after that?
So that would be more so whatever contract was signed for the server or the maintenance of the server. It's how I thought of that, and maybe if this virus goes away, maybe we don't have to have that agreement going forward. So a lot of it's a one-time cost, besides the recurring 600 a month.
Right, okay.
So that was my concern, is not to sign a long-term agreement for the server.
So what do you need from us?
Approval to have Randy go forward with purchasing the software and hardware and everything to upgrade the system. It's, like I said, it's going to be anywhere from 800 to 1,200 for the server, plus each, each, and they're looking at iPads or they're looking at Surface Pros, they'd like to get two of them.
Okay.
And they cost about $800 a piece also. So you're really looking at about somewhere between 2,800 to $3,000 in hardware-type items.
You would include the 600 a month for the first year?
That's what I would propose to do, I'd have to obviously talk with him about whether CARES will do that or not. I would assume they can.
Okay.
But just approval to go forward and applying for the CARES Act to cover the cost of it, at least for this initial term. And then purchase the equipment and proceed with Randy's recommendations, basically.
So everything would stay at the jail then, it would be available, whatever would come in?
The two, and whether it's, Randy recommends Surface Pro, he said they're just better equipment.
Okay.
And they're roughly $800, so we'd have two of those, plus protective casing.
Okay.
And then they'd install the server at the jail so that they could use it for the limited purpose of allowing defense counsel to talk with them. But this would put us in compliance with everything as far as civil rights, with them having a right to counsel and everything.
Sure.
And like I said, that was created by the COVID situation, before that, they could meet face to face, and they have this issue. So it's a newly developed issue.
Okay.
But Justin's aware of it, I talked with him, the judge is aware of it, I talked with him, and then I talked with Randy. So it's really just approval to try to seek reimbursement under the CARES Act.
That'd be good use for that.
If CARES won't grant it, then the county would have to pay for it though.
I'm confident they will, there'll be other things like that coming up yet?
Yeah, he's saying confident, talking to them too. So just approval proceed, I guess is what I'm looking for.
Okay, because, and with the understanding, we, we approved to proceed, that's without any, any assurance that we'll get reimbursed for that, so it may be our cost at some point, but we're going to have to have it anyway, so we just need to do that, so. Is there a motion to authorize it?
I'll make a motion that we allow Nick to work with Randy to move forward with getting things set up there at the jail for defense councils to meet with their clients. And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, do you have any other old business?
We talked about the tax sale, fair housing, we talked about... We've talked about comp time, I, I have a couple different proposals on that that I haven't sent to you yet, but the one that a lot of the counties are adopting is that comp time be put at the front of usage instead of taking vacation time or things like that first, that comp time be the immediate thing that employees would claim their time off on. And that's something Monroe County's done, as well as a number of other counties. What Monroe County did was they put a threshold, if you get over 60 hours of accumulated comp time, and then you can't go over that and claim vacation days or sick days, because you would take comp time, and if you're over that threshold. So that's one county's position on it. We're not allowed to adopt a use it or lose it policy, so they get to use the comp time, it's just a matter of, does it come at the front end, or does it come at the back end, or how's it determined? And we're allowed to determine, as far as what Monroe County did, that, you know, once you accumulate 61 hours of comp time, your next time off is going to be comp time first, then vacation time. So that's, that's the policy that seems to be the most popular around the state. But I can provide those policies to you guys through consideration. But that's the one I would recommend, I guess.
Okay.
It seems to be the most popular around the state.
You guys want to see other things, or you want to have Nick go ahead and work on?
I'd say if he wants to draw something up, he's looked at a few already.
I, I've pulled four of them.
I give vermin count.
Yeah, I have Vermillions, I have Monroe's, I have, I have the Fair Labor Standard Act terms, just to make sure we comply with it, and then we have our own policy, and then I have one from Southern Indiana also, I think it might be Bayou County.
I, I think, just go ahead and write up proposal, we, I think we're all on the same page if we think, we don't want to buy lose anything, but we just don't want to accumulate hours and hours and hours, so...
That seems to be how Monroe County was addressing it, was putting that threshold, and then you'd have your vacation time and sick time and things like that.
Because they do have to use sick time before they lose, I mean, vacation time before they lose it, so that would require...
You're allowed to have that policy, but you're not allowed to have that on a comp time policy. But that seems to be the majority of the county's positions on things.
You guys okay with just having, write it up and bring it to us, and see if that's it?
And I'll provide you the other counties to review also, just in case you can see a policy a lot better.
Okay.
So that was that. We're going to talk with Randy, I assume, on the speed limit, things that were brought up. We talked about jail. There's another thing that Justin brought to my attention, that right now we're having Jack Shannon do a lot of our training on our dogs for the Sheriff's Department, things like that, and he had indicated he'd feel more comfortable if we had a waiver of conflict done, just in case, since Jack, I think now works at the jail as a jailer, then maybe we have some type of waiver indicating that, you know, he's indicating it's not part of his employment with us, but also indicating it's not a conflict of interest, or that we're waiving the conflict of interest. So I just want to get authority to draft something of that nature also.
I, yeah, you guys have any question on that? Same kind of thing, Dan has to sign it, he's doing bridge work for us, because he's gainfully employed here, so...
And, I mean, there's just not a lot of people that do that type of training in this area, so... So with your blessing, I'll draft some.
Yes, correct heads. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Do you, you guys have any old business to bring up? The only thing I have is, we, we talked last time, we scheduled to make a decision on the Bridge Festival, because we get asked if we're going to cancel, if we're going to have it. We were going to make that decision August 3rd, that was with the assumption that the restrictions would be lifted July 3rd, but they weren't, they were pushed back two weeks. So I think having it lifted on July 18th only gives us a couple weeks to make that decision. We really won't have any science back whether that's been a, a problem since they lifted it or not. So I emailed these guys and asked them to think about it. My proposal would be to push that decision date back to the two weeks, and make it the second meeting in August, instead of the first meeting in August, that'd give us 30 days to see if we get a spike or if we have a problem. But as far as I'm concerned, well, a couple things. Leave it to the science, I mean, if the CDC comes out and says you shouldn't be having this festival, then we'll go with what the CDC recommends, but unless science comes out and says we shouldn't do that, then I would think we would have no standing to do it. And the other understanding is with the Cover Bridge Festival, sure, we could cancel the Cover Bridge Festival, but that would just be what happens on the square, and that'd be it, everybody else, Bridgeston, Mansfield, every place else on private property is going to do what they're going to do anyway. We have no control over what goes on on private property, so, I mean, you can make the motion to do that and keep it off the square, but I'd be hard pressed to do that without some real solid science saying that we shouldn't do that, because it's an outside festival, if you don't want to go on the 10, don't go on the 10, but other than that, you're outside for everything, and you can keep your distance and you can do those things, so. So I would make the motion then, that we push that date back to August. What is the date? 17? August 17th, and make the decision August 17th.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That still gives us like eight weeks before festival, if I remember right, you're close to that anyway, before festival starts, so plenty of time. That's all the old business I have then. Okay, we're going through department heads, Cindy, you have something back there?
Yes, right here.
Oh, you're, you're here with him? Okay.
No, he was just hiding, hiding.
Oh, okay. Well, I was going to, we didn't have you on the list, do you have anything to do before that?
No, you addressed the two things.
Okay, all right, all right, Chris, what you got? Come on up so we can hear you on the microphone here, we can record your every word.
So I just wanted to give an update on the CARES Act reimbursement that we're doing. So right now, we've had a little over $28,000, completed the legal review. So the next step for that amount of money is to request through FEMA the public assistance, and then after we see how much money we get back from FEMA, we'll then request through... And then after we see how much money we get back from FEMA, we'll then request through the Indiana Financial Authority for the rest of that.
How that'd actually work with Barnes and Thorburn, what do you have to do? Did you just send it to them? They look at it, got it back to you? How'd it, how'd it work?
It worked pretty well. It was pretty easy. We just had a spreadsheet, sent it to her. She looked at it, asked us to change a couple of things.
Okay.
And so, right now, we have...
Which is pretty quick? We were worried about turnaround time.
Two, three days.
Oh, good, okay.
Right now, we have, uh, about ten thousand dollars and we need some more documents. And that's the overtime for the sheriff's deputy who goes to the courthouse and then the other, the other ones. We need an invoice from the legal firm before we can claim that.
Okay.
And we've, uh, got about twenty-five hundred dollars in, uh, pending reviews that we're gonna build up and probably go through on Wednesday.
Okay.
So, the, the people that are out there, the departments that, um, we kinda haven't gone through or talked to are just parks and rec and the extension office if they have anything. Talked to the Hywood Department. They were all set. Um, we keep getting stuff from, uh, the custodians from Dawn and Kay and that's working out well. And then the sheriff's office, the health department, EMS keep sending stuff in as they, as they expect it, so.
So, you're comfortable. It's working?
Yes.
Good. You guys have any questions for him?
I do. Do you have a deadline on when you have to submit? Like, what's the cutoff for CARES Act qualification?
They said it was, uh, December thirty-first.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, it seems like a moving date.
'Cause I had emailed you about the jail and as far as access to the jail. And that's something we're gonna move forward on, so I'll begin with you as far as what you need to know on that.
Okay.
I don't know if you get your spec.
Yeah, just keep in mind that it is a reimbursement. So, you'll have to have the purchases, have to have the invoices, yep. Okay, anything else for Chris, guys? Good job. You're doing great. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris.
Sheriff's Department.
I don't have anything. They'll want to be here if you guys, any questions or anybody did.
Nope, I think we're doing smoothly, I think. I'm not seeing much going on.
I'll check around in case.
Okay, um, Randy. Before you get away today, we need to decide on wordage for the signs for Jackson Bridge. We can get those ordered and get those up. So, what do you got? Thanks, uh, three twenty-five looks good. I was, I drove that today. Hopefully, that'd be the last time you'll have to do that, maybe. It's, it's a lot of it, uh, a lot of it had dried up pretty good. So, maybe this one more time. Did you use elevens on it again like you had been? Okay.
Not yet. Root roads again. It wasn't real bad, but I think that was a little more. Five hundred each and one hundred dollars.
Okay. Thanks.
West Street Clay Plant, up around the school, up around the school, really good.
Good.
But, uh, Clay Plant and Little Street, the wooden, the whole crew up there is good.
Okay.
West Street is all right.
Okay. The, uh, asphalt job at Judson Road and three fifty, that looks good. I drove it and gave, we got a lot of, a lot, a lot of scratches from the, I mean, hooves, of course, on it, but, but I got down on it and it's, you know, it's not...
It's just scratches.
It's just scratches. Just scratches is all it is, yeah. So, I think it'd be all right. And then I drove thou- a thousand that Tammy was talking about today, and it's, it's, it's washboardy like they all get. Space going up the hill. There's one hole at the very top of it, but really that road's pretty good, pretty good shape. I'm not sure. I think she was more upset that the highway was closed than anything else and people were using that road to go around. But we always have that struggle if we have a closure. I remember on the Daly Hill.
It's an unofficial detour, but...
Yep.
It's only, probably only get by half the traffic at best.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the derelicts kept a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
And worse, through Jackson Bridge.
I did have a request for you to think about. North side of, of, uh, two thirty-six Judson Road goes up to seven hundred over to Howard and out to forty-seven is a shortcut. It's about three mi- three miles or two miles? Maybe two.
Yeah, I think it's two.
Yeah. 'Cause it does get a lot of traffic, I guess, coming through. I didn't realize it had. Maybe we should get a traffic count on that? I can, I can get a counter from El Tap unless you've got access to one.
We don't have one, but I do have a traffic count on it.
Oh, you do have?
Yeah, I don't remember what year it was.
And, uh, then see what the cost would be. Would chip seal be something you would consider for that route if it's traveled enough to make it worthwhile?
I don't really think so.
No, okay.
I think it ought to be a full room.
Paved?
Build up the base, pave it.
Okay, now, I know over the Duraberm, you're not supposed to pave over the Duraberm or, uh, concrete.
That's why you need the base.
Yes, you would, yeah. Can you chip seal over it? Will the chip seal crack as a result of the different expansion rates?
We did that here on, uh, Hawkins Road and it's holding.
It's holding okay? You're not supposed to, to, uh, pay over the Duraberm because the expansion rate's different between the, the asphalt and the Duraberm on the freeze and thaw stuff, so it cracks it.
That's something I didn't know until I, you know, I had nothing down here.
Yep, yep.
So far, it's holding up all right.
Good. And the chip seal may be fine. It may be flexible enough that it's okay. Maybe it's just that hot mix that would be a problem for them since it's hot, since it's that... Might be flexible enough to, to take it, yeah. We're not talking inches of expansion. We're just talking about a little bit, you know, but it is a different rate, so it would, would crack concrete. I think that's all I got except for the bridge signs. We'll get those in a minute here and get in. Yeah, uh, the guy that called about three twenty-five when I went out and looked at that, there, the waxy road. I appreciate you getting a guy out there to get sand on it that night. It was getting pretty nasty and, and that's been a frustrating road for you and for them. Hopefully, this last chip and roll will, will take care of it, but if not, it is gaining on it because there were spots of it that were okay. So, we are gaining on it anyway. So, hopefully, that's gonna be, uh, gonna be all right, but I appreciate you getting out.
Put some more chips on all of it.
Yeah, I saw you had, yep. Did you roll it too or just put chips on it? Oh, good, okay. Looked like it was. All right, what you got?
Well, this is the results from the truck beds. International. Rush Truck Center with W A Jones. Hundred fifty-nine, eight twenty-two. I didn't put the insurances in on that one. Had another sixty-two hundred, or sixty-two fifty to that. Then from International with Ron's bed. His bed was quite a little bit cheaper. A hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight seventy-one, seventy-eight, including all the insurances, or not the insurance, warranties. Kenworth, including the warranties, is a hundred sixty-four, fifty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Volvo's a hundred sixty-seven, nine eighty-four, seventy-eight, with all the warranties. The warranties are internally, internally lubricated components in the engine. A lot of externals too, the air compressor, uh, things like that. And Volvo. Frame and truck warranty more or less. Included about everything on the truck. Five years, two hundred fifty thousand light.
How many miles?
Two hundred fifty.
Okay. Is that pretty typical? Fifty thousand miles a year, pretty typical for a dump truck? Okay.
And one thing I like to say about Volvo is wherever we take it down there, there is something wrong with the DAF system or... Like here a while back, we had a problem with the differential lock. Switch was off, but it came on on the truck. You take it down there, we get right on it, right now.
Good.
Edge close to go. Of course, Kenworth's pretty close too. International, you gotta go beat it out.
Are, are you still having issues with the DAF on the Kenworths or not?
Yeah, I think the last one we took down there, it seems like it's solved now because it's not using near the DAF fewer than it was.
Okay. I know before, several years ago, in Southern Internationals, we was having a lot of electronic trouble too. They have now went to Cummins Engine, yeah, they run the Cummins. But still not know a lot about the electronics.
We had a lot of trouble with the warranty, if you remember, right, on the last two from north, up north there, off yet. And that kinda doesn't really matter. My recommendation is, what truck I like is Volvo. I don't know, but I'm sure where you wanna go. I think the Volvo is a great truck.
I can't imagine me picking anything other than what you recommended.
Two or three thousand dollars isn't worth deciding. If you're, if you're having better...
Service is a big thing. Get it down there and get it back.
Close and you're not spending weeks. That's why I say three thousand dollars on that such truck is not worth quarrel, no, Griff. That's, that's what you recommend. That's what I really think you should go with.
What do you think, Bruce?
Yeah.
It's not my... Yeah, not my field either.
I'm not an engine guy.
If Randy says we need that one, then to me, that's what the one we have. And Dan's good with it. He's got experience.
He deals with it all the time, so I'm not gonna argue with that, so. I've been down two or three weeks.
And the delivery dates.
Yeah.
The delivery dates are all within range, you know, or a couple of weeks, so it doesn't really matter from that standpoint.
The big thing is the service. We've had trucks, well, we were down two or three trucks for a long time.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Three thousand dollars don't mean nothing if you got a month on that truck.
So, what do you need from us?
Need your signature.
Okay. So, do we need, need to vote on this and approve this?
Red tag, red sign here.
So, is that your motion, Dan? Go with the?
Yeah, I...
Volvo?
Motion we go with, so the truck that Randy recommended.
And I'll second that.
Okay, move seconded to go with Randy's recommendation for the Volvo at one sixty-seven, nine eighty-four, seventy-eight. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Just one?
Yeah, that's what we...
Two or three of them out there, out there?
I didn't put money in for the next year, so.
Not sure. There's six lines there, but...
You just pick one. Yeah, that's good, that is good.
Our title over here doesn't really say or...
That's probably a case of the counselor or something with more, more people, probably. Cindy, while we're doing this, I know you're working on the, uh, community crossing stuff, and I know they pushed the date back. And how far back have they pushed the date for?
That email said maybe till September.
Okay.
But in the meantime, Randy, if you wanna get together, look on the road swatch, you would...
We're gonna do that in just a moment. Yep, Randy and I went and drove roads the other day and, uh, tried to pick out the worst and there's some...
Did you drive down Marshall Road?
No. Take a drive on...
I can show you something.
Take a drive on Cold Bluff Road, see what you think along there, yeah.
I don't drive Cold Bluff.
Yeah, Beedale Road and Cold Bluff Road.
Actually, the north of Beedale Road, I was on it a while back and it's terrible.
It is. And we're just looking going up to, to Sandier Road, not even going on it if it came from there. Hopefully, that'll be next time. It is, it's just beat up north of the bridge.
Yeah, it's, the north of the bridge to Annapolis, it's a mess.
Yeah, it is.
And we've got another one there on nine hundred on east of fifty-nine, the sections in them trees. It just beats your brains out.
Beedale Road, you can't go more than like twenty miles an hour through that part north of it.
Yeah.
Where?
It's north of the bridge there on...
Oh, Jack, on the, on the, oh, it's awful. Going back, hell, it's awful. So, that's where we're doing that.
Trying to drive through there with a trailer behind my truck.
Oh, man, it beats you to death.
Yeah.
From the bridge to Savannah, that section.
They did patch it, but it's still, still... There's no holes that way. There are humps this way now, so it's tough. Cold Bluff is a whole new experience. You need to go drive Cold Bluff. Go down to fifty-nine, turn left on Cold Bluff Road there, south of Mansfield. Take that little drive along there and see what you think.
I don't drive that.
So, you don't care about it. I know, I know.
I have to drive it every once in a while.
Okay, what else you got?
Uh, I've got a, I'm a cycle check for the grader lease payments.
Okay.
I've got one of each, uh, one with the taxes, which is a hundred ten, five ninety-two, twenty-seven, and one without the property tax, one oh-two, one twenty, fifty-five.
Okay, here's the conflict on that. So, we need some guidance on this, whether to pay or not to pay. In our, in our contract, we have on these, these leases that we are also liable for whatever taxes may be incurred. My, my mind, and I'm not a law, I'm not a lawyer, but my mind is, we're not, we don't own a piece of equipment, but we, but we lease it. So, it seems to me the tax should be paid wherever the ownership is, but according to the salesman, the statute says wherever it is, what was the three words? Control, maintain and...
Well, whoever's responsible for it.
Yeah, whoever's got it. Wherever, wherever it is being used.
What our contract says is what governs our position. I mean, we'd be subject to breach of contract charge.
Right, o- only if they get taxed for it, but they're saying they shouldn't be taxed for it because we should be getting taxed for it, but we're exempt.
Right. But we've contracted with them, I think, to indicate that we'll cover the tax.
Yes, and that, and I don't have a problem with that. That's if they have to pay a tax.
Right.
They got a tax from, tax bill from Park County for those graders that are sitting on our property. But he says every other county doesn't get taxed, an assessment from the assessor, because they are exempt. So, ownership, according to him, has nothing to do with it. It's where it's controlled, where it's being used. That's why a, a grader that's owned by a place in Illinois can be taxed by Park County taxing because it's here being used. Well, if that's the case, then it shouldn't be taxed because we're exempt from property taxes.
Right.
So, there's...
I'm curious to see his legal authority on that.
Yeah, me too. I, and, and I may have taken a picture of, of the wordage channel. Let me see if I did that. We, we had a discussion with him on that and I, I may have that wordage for you, which was the first I had ever heard of such a thing. See if I, if I wrote that down here.
These are the two exact, or these exact machines?
You got three, four graders?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you just forward that to me if you find a...
Why did they not charge taxes on one and we did the other?
No, they did all of them.
But, but the question to me is...
The two, two thousand, or twenty-one hundred seventeen dollars, not a few cents a piece.
So, I took it from the one oh-two to the one two.
So, basically, basically, it's like this, Dan. You live in Park County. I live in Illinois. I own a vehicle. I lease you the vehicle as for property tax, the piece of equipment. So, according to what they're experiencing is, I'm not getting taxed for it over here in Illinois because it's not on my property. It's, you're in control of it, maintaining it where you are, so you're liable for the property tax for it, so you get the property tax bill. But if that's the case, you're not, you're not taxable because you're exempt because you're a county entity, so you shouldn't be taxed. If I had to pay the tax myself, according to contract, you have to reimburse me my expense for that. But, but to me, it, you can't have it both ways. Either it's taxed by where it's owned, which is owned in Illinois, or if it's being taxed because Park County has it, then Park County shouldn't be taxed because they're exempt.
But I run into the same thing when I do state jobs. Anything I buy for that job is tax exempt because the state don't take one, money I one hand put in.
Right.
If I go ahead and buy something, pay taxes on it, I eat it because the state won't pay you back.
And that's the concern right here. Do we pay this invoice, including the tax, or pay without the tax and wait for that to be settled? Because, because they're not gonna pay that tax. I mean, they don't have to pay that tax. We have to pay that tax. We're the one liable for it.
Where are we receiving the tax bill from?
Park County.
So, we're taxing ourselves?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and which, which are, which are not. Park County actually is taxing them.
Right.
Park County sent a tax bill to them in Illinois because that's their piece of equipment.
So, they're trying to pass it off on us.
Which, which we would have to pay if we have to pay that, but if it's being taxed in Park County because it's Park County taxable, it's...
But...
We're not liable for it because we're exempt.
The taxed where used thing, that's new to me. I've not heard that before.
Janie had, I wrote that down. Of course, I now I can't, don't know how to write it down. I don't know how that book was made.
I mean, I'm not saying that's not the law. I'm just saying I'm not familiar with taxes.
It was three words like, like, uh, control, maintenance and use whatever, but that's not it.
It's, it's not that way on short-term lease. I didn't know if it, I assume it would be on long-term?
I've not, I've not seen that language.
Yeah, that was my first time of ever hearing that, but he quoted it like every county uses that, and that's just the way it is in every other county. He said, "This is the only place that they're getting a, getting a tax bill from."
I'm not saying it's lying. I'm just saying that...
Oh, I understand. I understand.
Has anybody talked to Katie?
She's the one that sent the bill.
I know.
Yeah.
Anybody talked to Katie? Why is she sending a bill? Nobody else is sending a bill. Anybody talk to Katie, why is she sending a bill, nobody else is sending a bill?
Good question. So why don't you talk to her, Bruce?
The redevelopment commission gets bills from Katie's office for any property that's under the commissioner or redevelopment name. But when we took it to the Dallas office, they're like, don't pay it, but we still send them out.
I usually don't recharge it.
So my, my, my opinion would be, pay the lease, but don't pay the tax, and let them see if they come after us for the taxes.
I would say, don't pay the tax until we legally.
Because you'll never get it back.
We need to, you need to give me time to look into that.
Okay.
But, I mean, if we're the ones sending it out, we're gonna pay our own tax.
Yeah, it don't make any sense.
I'm not sure why we're sending it then, but I can look into this though.
So give us the bill without the tax on it, we'll, we'll, we'll prove that, we'll pay that.
It was a one oh two, one twenty, fifty-five?
We'll pay the lease, the lease without the taxes on it, because they're not paying the tax.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, we're the enforcement mechanism, I'm not whether they pay the tax or not, so.
We don't wanna.
Right. But that should be something that takes me very long to look into, so.
Okay. Shoot, and that's why, that's why I wrote that down, so I could bring that up to the meeting, and I didn't bring that, that book with me. But if he's making up, he was good, because it certainly sounded illegal to me. I don't have it.
I guess if he gives us two or our time, just tell him to call me up, be in there, and talk to him.
Okay. Okay. So we just need a motion to approve that lease payment then?
Was it the one oh two, one twenty, fifty-five? Okay, I'd make a motion, we approve the lease for the graders without the taxes, a hundred two thousand, one hundred twenty dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. What else you got?
Street limit for top Ford Road and eight sixty north.
And two hundred top T M. And Tammy Carr was in here about one thousand north.
I didn't know anything about it yet.
Okay, well, she came in earlier.
She came in earlier, she was on it, so.
What seat did you want on it?
A thirty. This one, I think, both of these can be permanent, I think. One thousand you won't go, and right, just willing to leave the carpenter road too.
On one thousand, can we do those, like, now, as a temporary basis, or do you have to go through the ordinance process again? That's what I thought too, she wanted them quicker, but I thought we had to do the ordinance.
Anything that we're indicating a penalty for, we have to go through the process.
See, I, I was sure we did.
Put the signs up tomorrow, if it's not legal to authorize it.
And we have to advertise it after you approve it too.
Okay. So, you guys okay with taking, once you go and put the signs up?
We're gonna put signs up.
And we'll just start the ordinance process and get that done? Only, only thing different is we won't be able to find anybody for, for violating it.
The one thousand, what? How do we wanna describe it?
Well, from forty-one to carpenter road, and carpenter road all the way up to twelve hundred north. And then we all do twelve hundred north, up to forty-one, I'd say.
Yeah, at least temporary.
Yeah, you know, temporary. I don't know the mileage.
It's okay, as long as they have the route.
So it's one thousand, one thousand north from forty-one to carpenter road, then north to twelve hundred north, and then west to highway forty-one?
Alright. And we just want that temporary, or we want that permanent also?
Temporary.
Temporary, okay. The other ones you'd suggest permanent, though?
Yeah, because Landham lot is gonna have business going to use in that road.
Right.
And you want those? You want those up there to be also, Randy?
Yeah.
I know you didn't know any of those.
Yeah, that was her request for the one thousand, but just called all traffic out because of the runaround.
Alright, so I'll do it temporary, and then I can do the other ones as permanent.
Which we failed to tell anybody about, because the state was closing their road, and we should have told them more. Okay.
And of course, we've discussed that, and we, the community crossing grant back, or holding it. Copy of the roads that we ran, and decided to do, if you guys approve. Deer Run Road, from Town Road to Crane Road, one point nine nine mile. Deer Run Road from Crane Road to Jeffries Ford Road, one point one one mile. Beale Road from Jackson Road, just north of Jackson Bridge, to nine hundred north. One point seven three mile, and Beale Road five, from nine hundred north, to ten fifty mile, one point four three mile. And four sixty north.
Is nine hundred north, is that that little strip there by? Are we gonna include that?
That is.
Oh, does it? Okay.
Yeah.
This is, this is two nine hundred?
No, I told you wrong, that was nine, ten north, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Used to be. Nine hundred's the one that goes down past the John Big Mac.
Okay.
And it tees in right there, at that west intersection, or usually nine, ten.
Okay. It's continuous anyway, there's no gap, okay?
Four sixty north from Luminell Corporation line to forty-one. Cold Bluff Road from fifty-nine to Benzant Road, two point seven four mile. Cold Bluff Road from Benzant Road to Leader Road, one point seven seven mile, is a total of eleven miles, eleven point two six mile. And that's roughly around a million one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars.
Okay.
It could be higher.
Okay. Any questions? Then we just need a motion to approve.
Dan's doing some calculating over there, so I don't wanna.
Yeah, go ahead.
Say anything until you, no, you tell, okay, now I'll make a motion, we approve the roads that Randy has given us for the community crossing grant, the second phase for, to apply for state money, and I'll second that.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
The only other thing I have is one, one of your service records.
I've got a meeting at five thirty, I'm gonna have to hurry on, but we're gonna need to say, decide the wording on those signs. Cold and Lamremot isn't gonna, isn't gonna talk to you about, they are willing to move that, that cable back. You know, at Jackson Bridge, you know where their cable is up. You did talk to them already? Okay, so we just need to decide where we, where we need that. I talked to R E M C, they are willing to put posts, if we do wanna put a bar across at some point, and hopefully we're not gonna need to go to that point, but they already agreed to do that, if we need to do that. So, we're looking at putting signs, right now there's a height sign, as soon as you come down out of Annapolis on the Beale Road, there at Crawford Street, there's a height sign there, ten foot, six inches. Then about a mile up the road at, is it Rush Creek?
Roaring Creek.
Roaring Creek, Roaring Creek, another good place to turn around, would be a good place for another, another sign, and then the last chance would be at one fifty. With a, we need a big sign there, something to the effect of all trucks notice, or what do you wanna say there, covered bridge with a, with a icon of a covered bridge on there, so they understand it's a covered bridge ahead. It's eleven feet clearance, there is no other turnaround, this is your last chance to turn around, like, make it as clean, as clean as we can. So we need to decide that, because we need to get these ordered, we need to get these up here pretty quick, so. So at Annapolis, do you just wanna put a covered bridge icon, say covered bridge, it's right at three miles, and it's from there, I can measure again. I think it's three miles. Three miles ahead.
Low clearance.
Low clearance, and put the clearance distance, eleven foot clearance, and the, and the weight limit on it. And, and at the bottom, put no, no turnaround at bridge, no turnaround available at bridge, something like that, be okay? And then the next place where there is a good turnaround, because you really can't turn around there very well, at Crawford Street. There is a good place to turn around at Roaring Creek, then there say that a mile ahead, same thing, covered bridge, low clearance. No semis beyond one fifty north, or whatever we want that to say, and we keep saying that, we've gotta decide what we wanna say. But the big one would be at one fifty, say this is all trucks, covered bridge, low clearance. This is the final turnaround opportunity, it's a road you can back into, it's just a regular highway, I mean, a road that tees into, to that road. And that is the last opportunity for a semi to turn around, the original place else for a semi to turn around, if they go beyond that point, you're, you're out of luck.
How big are these signs?
How big we want, we need them big. I think we need them at least, at least.
Two posts?
Yeah, two posts for sure, yeah, at least as big as those boards, I think. And we can do them lighted, they're more expensive, but you can put lights on them too, you know, or you can put a red flashing light, like stop signs have, on the, on the last one that says this is the last opportunity. But we don't, it doesn't happen tonight, it happens daytime, so I don't know if they don't drive those roads at night or what, but it's always daytime stuff.
Well, deliveries.
Yeah.
I, I guess what my opinion is, instead of tossing it around, if continuously, if we need to get them ordered, I have no problem. Bruce, I give you permission, you draw something up and write it out and see how it fits and.
Okay.
You already know the distances pretty much and everything, I don't have a problem with.
Including that, including that motion then, that there be no complaining afterwards?
No.
Anything was said wrong?
As long as you stop trucks from going through it, that's it.
No complaining by these two.
By these two, yeah, no complaints later.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, we allow Jim to go ahead with the wording on the bridge signs for the Jackson Bridge, keep it from getting torn up, so Randy can order the signs.
Well, if we come up with something, maybe we can work on it tomorrow, are you available tomorrow?
No, I'm, I have two officers applying this.
Okay. Let's try to get it done this week, let's pick a day then, and see what we can do.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I have I have something Wednesday morning, I don't remember what it is. Oh, that's, that's, yeah. Yeah, I got Learning Center at eight o'clock, and then I've got our meetings here at nine, so Wednesday won't work for me. I could do Thursday morning. That work? Let's, let's plan Thursday morning then. What time you two sending the guys out, at eight o'clock or so? Seven thirty, okay. Let's just, I'll bring some paper, we'll just knock something out, and we'll get them ordered. And see if it makes difference.
I said something to Jim. If you got a bridge, it's got, kind of a bridge got quite a bit of graffiti in it, I got some, you have half a dozen volunteers do some community service, so. If you wanna pick one out and get with it, we'll get some state. Pick a lunch, and send me a text, and I'll get them like that, put you there, and run them out and do them.
I have a C V.
Community service.
I'm sorry. I have a C V C meeting tonight, did you come up with the number to re, re-riff that bridge? Okay. Okay. Ballpark, what do you think it would be, you've had experience with them, ten thousand?
Yeah, I have an idea, well.
Okay. Is that Smith Smith Bridge? Yeah, right there, before you get to Moniz River?
Yeah.
Not the one directly behind the, the.
Phillips, then the next one, that's Smith Smith, yeah.
It's, it needs to be re- replaced, this has got daylight coming all through it, it's a wooden. Now, do you wanna go back with wooden shingles on those things, you wanna put metal on?
Nope, metal.
I would say metal. Bruce, you okay with metal on those, instead of wooden? Wooden looks nice for a while, but then it just falls apart, and they use metal.
It starts leaking, it's fire hazard when it gets dry in the summertime, it's easy to light, I just said, metal will be done with it.
Okay.
As long as it's got.
How about consensus from the room, the newspaper people, you guys okay with the metal roofs instead of wooden shingles on them?
Larry and Deanna was here old enough to remember wooden shags till they started bringing them back, I mean, obviously.
Larry's the oldest guy in here, I think, he oughta remember that stuff, he oughta know pretty well. Okay, maybe not.
Maybe not.
Been using metal since, well, mid to late thirties, probably.
Yeah.
Forty.
Yeah, we had many of them, they were, they were metal, metal roofs. Soon, actually, soon as they came out, they started using that, because that was the thing at the time.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Yes.
More functional.
That was the improvement, sure was. Okay, well.
Yeah, one more question, where are you at on the, get the head down on the brush gun?
Yeah, we haven't used it yet.
Okay. Get, get the bump, before you saddle that up, let me know.
I do have a, I do have a request.
Couple of rubs when you go that direction.
I know we've had this discussion before, and I know you took care of it before, but we slid back a little bit, at least, I didn't see them, at least according to a gentleman that I talked to, who was talking about three fifty there. I know in the past, I've seen where they, when they've cut brush, brush off, they leave a stump up out so far, and he can't get in with the tractor to mow it, plus it's, it's just those spears broken up, I just hate those things. Could you talk to them about cutting those off flat with the ground when they cut brush down? I know the, I know the big head will do that, but if they're going out with chainsaw, they were just cutting them off about over a foot above the ground, leaving that post with that, with that spear on top of it, and and if anybody wanted to come along and mow, the farmer wanted to mow, they couldn't mow it then, they couldn't get in there, but if we take them off the ground, they could. So if, if you'd ask them out there, remind them about that, about getting those off closer to the ground if they could. You guys got anything else? Anybody got anything else in the public? Yeah?
The, the road going into Diamond, I think about, I don't know, maybe the last one or something, but to do corporate in, and it'd be nice to be blacktopped, it's probably settled in by now, with the blacktopped over.
Sarah, corner of Sarah Grill's house, we've talked about.
Okay. Most new jury?
I'll make a motion with a jury.
We adjourn.
I'll say.
I'll make, I've got five minutes to get there, it's right, courthouse, I can make it. Ninety-seven year old. Mother-in-law fell, broke a leg.
That's what I heard you say, eh?